Are we ready, Linda?
Ready.
Okay, thanks for coming out, everybody. We're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna start with the swearing in of the new members.
Yeah, I'll just start with the mayors, perhaps, and it's a big photo op.[44.01][44.01](Laughter).
My number one favorite.[48.46][48.46](Laughter). Do I have to call it there?
Yeah, oh yeah.[53.12][53.12](Laughter).
Yeah.
I'm not gonna make you try to repeat after me this time, Mel. I'll just let you read it yourself.
I, Chris McKernan, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of mayor of the city of Casson, the state of Minnesota, to the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you. Yep, I just need to have you sign that and return it. Mel.
I, Melissa Ferris, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Minnesota, and that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of councilperson in the city of Casson and the state of Minnesota to the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you. And if you'll sign that, we'll take it back from you. Dwayne?
Did I get this read again?
Yeah, yeah.[124.14][124.14](Laughter).
I, Dwayne Burton, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Minnesota, excuse me, and that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of the councilperson in the city of Casson and the state of Minnesota to the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you.
So, open it up.[146.19][146.19](Laughter).
Yep, sign those and pass them my way.
Thanks, Teresa.
You're welcome.
Call me Mel and Dwayne. We'll start with the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections? I've got one.
Yes.
Anything else besides that?
I don't have anything else.
Dan, anything?
No.
Dwayne?
No.
No, no, okay. We've got on the consent agenda, claims B. The total is gonna be $2,017,283.42. There was $186.26 that was paid to Urbans that later showed up on Visa card as well. So, that payment is different. So, that's the only change that I have. After that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries unanimously, Linda. On the consent agenda, any questions on the consent agenda? If none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Bonnie. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Dwayne. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Onto visitors to the council. Karen, our favorite Karen.
Oh, yeah. Wow.[244.12][244.12](Laughter).
Like I said.
A lot of pressure here.[248.12][248.12](Laughter). For the new council members, I'm Karen Ducharme with the Southeast Minnesota Multi-County Housing and Redevelopment Authority. And the purpose of my visit tonight is to request a public hearing for the 2019 Small Cities Development Program application. So, in the summer of 2018, we surveyed the community to determine the interest for housing and commercial and rental rehab within the city of Casson. We submitted an application for 20 owner-occupied rehabs within a targeted area of the city. I can share that map if you wanna pass it along, Teresa. Otherwise, it'll be in the February council packet if the council approves to go ahead with the public hearing for the February meeting. That'll be part of the packet. And then, we also applied for seven commercial rehab properties. So, this is a two-phase application. There's a preliminary proposal, and then they do a rating. And then, if you get a marginally competitive or competitive application, ranking on your preliminary proposal, you're invited to submit a full application. The city of Casson received a marginally competitive ranking, which was a little shocking to myself and Teresa a little bit, but after talking with the state last week, I kinda understand where they're coming from. So, really, the owner occupied is strong. They like it. They didn't cut us any units. We applied for 20 units. Normally, when we apply for that high, they cut us down to 14, 15, so we didn't get cut at all. So, we're good there. The only thing they suggested is taking the largest owner's contribution of 12%, which is roughly $3,000 on a maximum project cost, and dropping it to 10. So, making it more beneficial for the owner, which is another surprise for me, 'cause it usually goes the other way. So, good news on the owner occupied. The commercial, I think part of this is that Davis Bacon labor standards applies, prevailing wage rates apply to that. And in the county, Dodge County is considered a metro county because of its proximity to Rochester. So, the rates are much higher than even Goodhue, which is closer to the Twin Cities. So, I think that's where they're coming from, and they really want us to make sure that that interest is solidified. So, they felt like we had good match money and all that. So, Teresa, Stephanie, and I are gonna discuss the commercial on Monday, come up with a strategy for moving forward, but we're staying with the owner occupied. We'll make the changes there. So, the next step in the application process is to conduct a public hearing to get public input on the application. And then, there will be some approvals along with that. The city has to approve a resolution that they wanna move forward, and the application we do the end of February, and we will find out in May-June timeframe.
So, beneficial to drop or modify the commercial to have a better chance of getting a residential?
So, that's kind of our game plan. That's why we're gonna have a call on Monday to kinda strategize about what to do next. Like I told Teresa this afternoon, if we go ahead with what that we've applied for, I don't know that they would say, "We'll just drop the commercial" or "Reduce the commercial number of units." I don't know, and I don't know that I wanna gamble with that. I don't.
Right, so our residential's still strong.
Yep.
They just had to give away $600,000 there, but...
Yep. And they're telling me to maximize that request, so I'm going the other way with what I'm used to being told by them, which is great. It's great for the city, but it's just, I don't know what to expect and anticipate with my history with working with the program. So, we're gonna strategize and come up with a plan to... Our goal is, our primary goal would be to get that stronger interest, make sure we have those property owners really interested and understanding the program, and not drop the commercial. And then, I'll be able to write about it in the application that this is the steps we've taken to make sure that these people are interested. I can include that in the application.
So, do you need us? We don't need to bring anything tonight. We need a resolution to approve a public hearing.
Yep, and the city doesn't have to worry about any of the publications. We take care of all of that for you guys.
And in which meeting do I do it in February?
Um...
The first?
The 13th. The 13th.
That's what it's on the resolution. Our city has the agenda. All right. Okay, any other questions for Karen?
I've got one. Have you ever been in a situation where you just dropped the commercial end of it?
Um, not. I don't...
The only concern I have is if we do get anything for this, and some commercial project does come along, most contractors, once they hear it's Davis Bacon, they're gonna bail.
Right. And we actually have contractors. I had a contractor today call about a big rental we're doing in Kenyon that's Davis Bacon. "Oh, that's fine." You know, and I'm like, "Wait, contractor run when they hear it's Davis Bacon." So, I don't know if that's...
Maybe they weren't from here, maybe they're from Metro.
Yeah. So, and we have staff that works on the Davis Bacon with them. So, if we make sure that they're in compliance and we're in compliance, and so I have a staff solely dedicated just to Davis Bacon. So...
I was just curious if you've ever...
I don't recall, 15 years of doing this, I don't recall where we've ever just dropped an activity between the preliminary and the full application.
I was just curious.
We've always tailored, you know, we may reduce it a little bit, but we've never just, I don't think that we've ever dropped it. But my whole goal is to get money into the city.
Right.
So, I don't wanna jeopardize the whole thing.
Right.
We'll talk, and we'll come with both recommendations, and then the council can make a determination what their application will look like.
I was just curious.
And we also do have that missed money that can be used. We can reduce our commitment to the application of what we're using and use that for commercial outside of the program. It's still gonna be Davis Bacon. Davis Bacon will still apply, but that is an option too, so that we are helping those who really need it. If we feel it, we have to drop it. But we will discuss that. We'll have an answer for the February meeting, 'cause at that point, the council will be approving, this is what we want the program to be.
Yep. Okay. Anything else? I'll entertain a motion to approve a resolution calling a public hearing on February 13th.
I'll make that motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Dwayne. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
See you on February 13th. Sounds good.
Next, we have long night's term with Enterprise.
And we do have a new cash flow sheet, both in drop box and in front.
Hello.
Anyone?
To a final in drop box.
Yep. I still get nervous, and it doesn't matter how big the county or city I go to.[748.82][748.82](Laughter). We're here to address, then, the final spreadsheet of the cash flow here that we've wrapped up, and we've discussed with your department heads and the police chief as well, looking at the first nine vehicles for the 2019 model year. The ones in green is, or you can't see that, the ones shaded dark, is the three that were already, two of them are already been converted to lease. And then, the third one, we're trying to figure out what to do, because city Casson already ordered a utility interceptor with the hidden Ford, and they said that they might have lost the vehicle or it's been scrapped. So, they're not sure. And that's an issue. So, we've been, my associate and I, Chris Appert, we've been talking to them every week to try to get an update. They don't have a final answer yet, but he said it doesn't look good. So, our plan as an alternative, then, is to match a Durango as a replacement, 'cause we know we can order that, with the other two that we're asking for approval, that are the pursuit-rated Durangos for replacing the four utility interceptor. The reason why we went to the Durango versus the new utility interceptor is it went up over $5,600 for the gas-to-gas version and over $8,000 for the hybrid option. So, the gas savings isn't enough, in our opinion, to overtake that kind of cost, upfront cost. And the Durango is the same or very competitively priced same as a 2019 utility interceptor. So, for cost savings for the city, we recommended the Durango and the police chief agree. So, for now, we've replaced that unless that utility interceptor somehow reemerges. We don't know. The other three additional vehicles that we're asking for, then, is for the public works department that you can see here. So, the first year is a total of nine vehicles. And what you see, to go over the cash flow again, just to remind everyone, if you're to pay cash and buy these vehicles, you need over $311,000. Obviously, that is way over the capital budget. What your average spend each year, including maintenance on operating costs, is around What we're obviously proposing is getting nine vehicles instead and lowering the total cash outlay to $90,000. So, almost $40,000 in savings for the city. More importantly, the new nine vehicles will be a lot safer for, obviously, the community, and the fuel economy and the maintenance savings as well will be significant, as you can see. The other part of this that is a little bit misleading, but we're actually saving a lot more in that first year, because we're using your average over the last few years. But this particular year, you actually needed more vehicles than normal. So, it's a little, we'd rather be conservative, I guess. With that, we're asking for the approval for the first nine, excuse me, and any questions?
I just have one question. Nancy, did you get that?
Yeah.
Does this fit with what we discussed in our finance meeting?
The nine, the nine include the two we already have?
Yes.
So, we're really talking about seven new vehicles.
Correct.
It's yes and no, if we're talking just dollars that have been dedicated from the police department. We're looking at only three, and then three for public work. So, there's one extra police vehicle, I believe, in there.
So, that's...
But we can make it work, I guess.
Well, no, but we had gone through some spreadsheet stuff about what our budget actually was, 'cause you had what our averages have been, but then we took what our 2019 budget actually was. So, here's how many we could do. And we did have some carryover from '18, but then we wouldn't necessarily use all that in '19, because then that's gone. We'd have to spread that over the five-year period to phase it in.
Sure.
So, that's the number I was kinda looking at, was, does it fit within that?
Three police and three general levee ones.
Okay.
It's kinda where we're at, because, just so other people know, what's not on the list there is that it takes about $12,000 to equip each police car, and that'll be factored into the other calculations.
Okay. So, our cash outlay for 2019 is $27,556, if I read that correctly.
Yes, sir.
With that's the lease payments after we do the purchases and sales and the lease payments, and then we factor in the trade equity. So, are you comfortable with that, Nancy? After our conversation with the finance?
Well, we had come up with six, but I'm not even sure if some are enterprise ones. So, I think we can make the seven new ones.
Okay. Because the 27 sounds, that rings a bell, that that was about the number we were looking at for the first year, so... Any questions from anybody else? Mel and Dwayne, anything on what we're doing here? Did you guys follow that and follow them or go through why and all that?
Yep.
Okay, I guess we actually come out with a plan, you did, and then now, we're gonna have to do a report card and see how it goes, 'cause this is gonna save us this money, so we'll, you're gonna be able to track that for us and give us updates, that type of thing.
Yes, you have a, the city of Casson has a dedicated account manager, and he's with me today.
Perfect.
Thank you.
I'm here to make sure we can do everything Wong says.[1143.01][1143.01](Laughter). I like that.[1145.01][1145.01](Laughter). You have to call the sales guy to ask me if you think of that. So, these numbers are good to you, too?
Yeah. It's getting a little old. He's been on here at public meetings now.
Well, you should be used to it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, I do have one question.
Yes.
We, when we approved this, or we were looking at this, we went without the maintenance plan, right?
Right.
We're doing our maintenance.
So, that, is that not figured in on your cost right now?
Correct.
Okay. That's all right. 'Cause I was just making sure, when it said estimated maintenance, I just wanted to make sure on some of that.
And we will be tracking that internally.
Okay. Perfect. Any other questions for? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the lease agreement as per that.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Mel. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Thanks, Dwayne. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Look forward to working with you guys.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Hi, Chris. We have Chris Colpul with DMV.
Oh, it's not Kyle?
It's not Kyle.
Okay. All right. We have Chris.
He's a lot younger and senior than I am, so...
You still want these?
Yeah, yep. I just bring forward copies so you guys will follow along.
Okay.
Thank you for having me. I'm Chris Colpul, CEO of Compass, and I'm gonna talk about kind of what we view as the last leg of our power supply plan, the long-term plan we started back in, about four years ago now. Let me give my upfront caveat to everybody. I've been in this business for 30 years, on the wholesale side of the business, so if I'm using acronyms or terms you understand, please, please, please ask, because I tend to lapse into that sometimes, as Teresa's well aware, we're at a board meeting today. But if you remember about a year, a little over a year ago, year and a half ago?
Over a year.
We were here asking for a long-term 5x16 that you guys approved, which was place the one that had expired, or actually did expire at the end of last year, so we're on a new one now. And part of what we're looking for here is to look at kind of what is the last piece of the portfolio. So, when we look at long-term planning, we're trying to figure out what do we, how much do we wanna cover on a long-term basis? What makes sense? What are the economic options around that? And, you know, does it make sense to buy power, lock in prices on a long-term basis or longer-term basis? And long-term can have a variety of meanings. Or do you sit and just continue to buy from the market, which is always an option? Now, there's risks associated with just continuing to buy from the market. There's potential risks of doing a long-term plan where you're locking in prices that you turned out that you didn't need it. The way I, a simple analogy I've used on that is, it's like insurance, right? This is insurance. What we're asking for, and what we're looking for is feedback from each of the communities and kind of what they want. We're gonna walk through kind of the three options that we're looking at, and keep in mind, this is only for about the last 10 or 15% of the power supply portfolio that we're looking at for the members. We've filled pretty much everything else up to that, and then there's gonna be about another 10 or 15% that we wanna leave on the market. And the reason for that is that part of what you're trying to manage is risk, and if you want to, you know, ensure that you cover every single megawatt, you're gonna end up paying for that. And usually, you end up paying more for that absolute complete certainty than it's typically worth from a risk standpoint. But that doesn't mean you wanna leave everything at risk, because then you're subject to the variations of the market. So, there's three things, there's three options here. There's what we call the do-nothing plan, which is just continue to buy from the market long-term. There's the traditional wind power purchase agreement, which would be an additional PPA above and beyond what you guys have and what some of our other members have in terms of our portfolio. And there's what's new product, what's called the wind-shaped product, and I'll get into what that means. All of these are being driven by economics and economic decisions. They're not being driven by renewable standards requirements, although there's always a chance with any legislature that if they go back and up the, you know, renewable requirement from 25 to 40% or whatever that number is, that, you know, this could factor into that. That is not the driving factor behind any of this right now. It's purely economics. So, what I'm gonna do today is to go to page three, just kinda walk through what they are, and this is just for information. We want feedback from the members. Unlike most times when we come and present here, there's typically a specific recommendation that we have, because it makes the most sense, because of the economics, because of risk, because of all those things that I just mentioned. This is a scenario where there's really not a specific recommendation. It's kinda city by city, and again, this goes into the risk piece of it, and I'll get into this a little bit in terms of what we're looking for. So, if you go to the next page, page four, just a refresher, this shows what your long-term power supply portfolio looks like right now. You'll see that the, you've got the Whip Your Nuclear Purchase, you've got the 5x16, which was extended, and you've got the existing wind, which is up on top. We lay that on top for a reason. We're not usually really looking for wind as to cover your hour-by-hour load. We use it as an economic, either A, an economic hedge, or B, we need it because of our renewable energy standard requirements from the state. And we've got all those covered, so that's, again, that's not the factor here. But then you've got the stuff that's being covered by either immediate, shorter intermediate term purchases. And so, what we're looking at is, is there another product out there that can kind of hedge or, you know, fill in some of that, that gap on the scrap? So, you go to the next page. This, page five, really reflects what we call the do-nothing scenario. What you see there and what this is meant to illustrate is, here is Casson's all-in power supply costs over time. The gray line is kind of what our expected or our base case is. The gray shading on either side of that is based upon the potential prices, based upon the high and the low. And the high and the low case scenarios are almost 100% exclusively driven by natural gas prices. So, that's really the driver behind all of this, is what's natural gas price is gonna look like. But this kinda gives you an idea of what your forecasted or what your expected prices would look like, plus that risk band, if you will, is what we're trying to show here. And again, that's the do-nothing scenario. So, if you go to the next page, Dwayne. I think I've talked to you before about this, the idea of wind as a gas hedge. The reason wind works as a gas hedge is, I mentioned this a second ago, that your prices in the market are almost exclusively driven by natural gas. Well, if natural gas goes up, the price of electricity goes up. So, if you're purchasing wind and turning around and selling that into the market, if gas prices stay low, you're selling that into a low-priced energy market. If gas prices go up, you're selling that wind into a higher-priced market. So, it acts as a financial hedge against the cost of natural gas. It's not a perfect direct hedge. It's not a direct one-to-one, but it does have hedging qualities, especially when you look at it over a long-term basis. And for these power purchase agreements, we're looking at either 20- or 25-year PPAs. So, over a, you know, 25-year period, generally, they look very good and they work very well as a hedge. Now, at any given hour, it may or may not, but over the long-term average, they do.
By what percent roughly?
Well, that, what we try to do is size the wind based upon your uncovered, or your electricity that's not covered in the market, so that what you're doing is you're sizing the wind to that energy you're buying from the market. And because you're not using the wind to cover that load on an hour-to-hour basis, you're just saying that if I'm buying X number of megawatts from the market, and the market goes up, I'm still paying that when I'm buying it from the market, but I'm offsetting that increased cost that I'm paying for the, on the load with the increased revenue I'm getting from, from that wind sale into the market. And so, it's a purely a financial hedging instrument, if you wanna think of it that way. It's not meant to be, again, to cover your hour-by-hour load. Over the long-term, it works out well from a dollar, from an economic perspective, as an economic hedge. So, and this just kind of explains what we're looking at here and how that works a little bit. If you go to the next page, page seven, this is, again, similar to what I said, you know, how it works, gas prices. There is one really difficult to quantify, essentially... There is one really difficult to quantify, or essentially impossible to quantify, and potentially, potentially detrimental problem that you have with the pure wind purchase. And that is that we have grave concerns that, given where the market is heading and given this huge wave of wind that is being put into the MISO interconnection queue, that we could see a reoccurrence of what we saw back in the 2005 to 2010 timeframe where there was substantial amount of congestion. And the reason I say that is because in that timeframe, you had all this wind that was rushed to get built, and most of that was driven by the state's requirements to meet the RES standards at the time. And you had lots of wind that was built before transmission was available to deliver it to load. And so you saw these huge swings from curtailment of the wind and/or huge depressions of the LMP prices that you're seeing at the wind. Well, I just said it works great as a gas hedge, but not if my wind at my location is either being shut off because there's not enough transmission to generate it, or I'm actually paying, because the LMPs can't go negative, I'm paying to deliver it into the market. We are very concerned about that because right now, there's about 80,000 megawatts of wind in the MISO queue. And if you look at the historical development rate, which is usually between 20 and 25%, you could see something between 15,000 and 20,000 megawatts being built in the next, of wind being built in the next five years. While this wind is a gas hedge, works great in theory, it will not look very, there's the possibility it will not look very good, certainly in the first, you know, five years or so. If we go forward, and we're still trying to analyze that, and unfortunately, we're not going to be able to give a really simple, clear answer to that because there's a lot of moving parts that are very difficult or impossible to really quantify with any great certainty. If we go forward, the recommended amount we would ask for for Casson is 1.6 megawatts. And again, we're looking at, you know, the 20, 25 years. The three bidders we have right now that are kind of in the lead, if you will, are all offering 25-year contracts. So again, there's risk to that. From a purely economic basis, and if you leave out the congestion risk component, the best pure economic option is probably this one. But again, there's risks that we, you know, have a hard time quantifying in terms of that. I'll show that a little bit more here in a second. So the last one, oh, I'm sorry, page eight essentially shows what that would look like in terms of that wind is a gas hedge. And again, the gray in the background is the same one you saw before. It's kind of your do-nothing. And the, the greenish colors show what that range looks like with this wind is a gas hedge product. So obviously, it lowers your cost and it reduces the range on that, that, that risk profile. But again, this is not factoring in those congestion and curtailment factors because it's, it's nearly impossible to do that. So the third option is what we call a wind-shaped product. And what that effectively does is we negotiate a contract with the supplier. Supplier turns around and they sign the PPA, which I was just talking about. And in turn, what they're going to do is take and deliver to us a specific amount of energy at a specific time. So any curtailment risk, any congestion risk, any risk tied to, well, the wind is blowing at 3:00 in the morning in April and we don't really need it, but we really would like to have it at, you know, noon on a Wednesday in July, all of that gets factored out. And what we would, they would deliver us a fixed shape every day based upon an agreed-to schedule and agreed-to price. Now, that works great because we can, we can tailor that to every single individual city, including Casson. We don't have any of those curtailment risks. We don't have any of those congestion risks. Whoever are going to pay for it? So the, and we would buy that based upon a fixed volume of energy, not capacity, because the, in the wind, you buy the capacity, you get the 1.6 megawatts, and you get the wind, you get the energy when it generates. Like I said, if it's, you know, 3:00 in the morning in April and you don't need it, you're selling it into the market, well, maybe there's better options. This, you don't have to worry about that. You're delivering it every day. There's four periods. There's summer, weekday, summer weekend, and then the balance of the year, the rest of the year for the weekday and weekend. So we can shape that to your load. And that recommended volume for Casson would be about 6900 megawatt-hours a year, which is basically comparable to the wind if you just look at it from pure energy standpoint. Page 10 then shows how that would fit in kind of on a typical day. And so what you're seeing here is on a typical day, this is a typical July day in 2025, you've got your kind of baseload energy is coming from the nuclear purchase at the bottom. You've got the five-by-sixteen, which is kind of the light purple on here, which we talked about before. And these blues you see is kind of where you're shaping, you're filling in the shape of that wind product. And the way we'd size this so that you're not buying too much or you're not over-supplying in, in a lot of hours is we use kind of a standard deviation load forecast with a, I'm sorry, a standard load forecast with two standard deviations. So you're, you're not, you're not making sure you're not continually overbuying. We're trying to, again, you're trying to match the shape. You're not trying to match it exactly. You're trying to, to fill in those, those gaps in those periods. Let's go to page 11 again. Now, this shows the same thing as before where it shows the gray in the background is your do-nothing case and the, the green in the front is, is your, your expected case with those ranges. Now, the problem with that is that effectively, what it amounts to is that in order to have somebody do that shaping for us, you're going to pay about $10 a megawatt-hour. We can price it with and without the renewable energy credits. Those are about two and a half bucks on a long-term basis. And we're looking at 10 to 15 years in length. So it's the price, it's better in terms of the prices are fixed. It's better in terms of your delivery or your certainty of delivery. But the negative side is you're paying a premium for that, and it's a shorter term. So what we're really trying to, the message we're really trying to leave here is if you, I just paid, I just talked about page 13. So really, if you want to go to, the, the real answer here is that, you skip ahead to 15, what this really is is insurance, and that's what you need to think about it. This is supplemental insurance, right? I'm mostly covered with my standard medical insurance. I'm okay. Do I need more, right? I know that there's certain things that I may not be covered with, with my current insurance, but I'm okay, I'll live with it, is one. That's the do-nothing option. Or I'm going to buy supplemental insurance, I'm just going to buy a standard product, and there may still be some things that won't be covered, but more of it will be. It's kind of, you know, that's your kind of, your wind is PPA. And then there's the gold plan, where I'm going to buy supplemental insurance that'll cover everything, but I'm going to pay for that in terms of the premium. So the question is, do you think you're going to need it or not, right? Because I can buy, you know, expensive insurance and cover everything, and if I never get into an accident, or if I never get sick, or if it's home insurance, if I never have to file a claim on my roof or my house doesn't burn down, I'm paying money that I didn't need to spend. And so what we're trying to do with the members with this round is to kind of lay out what we're looking at, what the options are, try to get some feedback from the members so we can go forward in terms of, of the options we want to pursue. There is a possibility with this that, that some of the members want to do nothing, some of the members want the straight wind PPA, and some of the members want to pay the additional premium to kind of fix that cost, if you will. Because that's what it'll do, that effectively this will lock in the bulk of your power supply cost until between, for the next 10 to 15 years. But again, you're going to pay a little bit of a premium for that. And there is a scenario here where we do one, we do two, we do all three, depending upon what the members want. I know this is a lot, what, what we're, what we're telling people in this initial round is we'll be back at least once more, maybe twice. If there are questions, please, 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 please ask. If we can get into as much detail as you want, if we wanted, you know, just go over it again, if you have questions for Teresa, she can ask me. Teresa has my, you can contact me or Kyle directly. We're here to answer your questions. Because like I said, this is a little bit unusual, at least since I've been here. We don't have a specific recommendation. And what each city chooses will be based a little bit on risk appetite, right? Am I willing to pay a little more to lock that price in? Am I willing to just say, no, I think the market's going to stay like this for a long time, so I'm willing to just ride it out? Or do I do kind of the middle ground, you know, kind of your standard, if you will, supplemental, which is the wind PPA, which economically is good. They're cheap. Wind is incredibly, incredibly cheap right now, but you've got that, that what we believe is a big potential risk on the front five or so years of that. And the problem with that is it may be cheap in the long run, and it may be good, but if, you know, you thought you signed a $20 PPA and for the first five years, it turns into effectively a $35 PPA because of congestion and curtailment, in the middle add, it's not, you're not going to be very happy about it. So it's like buying a car. I bought a brand-new car and it's 3,000 miles on it, had the transmission replaced. It's been okay since, but it never quite goes away. So.
So Chris, on page five, which is, which was our do-nothing, and shows what was happening in 2014 and 2015, correct me if I'm wrong, but at that time, we were actually locked into a contract that was costing us more.
Yes, the, yes, that's correct. There, well, there are two things that were happening in that 2014-15 time. One, we were in the old five-by-sixteen. And the other thing you had here specifically for 2015, I believe it was, is that the MISO capacity markets spiked for this region. So you had a one-year spike in your capacity cost. There's a whole nother, another study we're, we're going to work on for you guys in terms of long-term capacity. This is energy-only in this whole thing, but that's why, but this is an all-in cost projection, which includes capacity.
Right.
So you've got, you had two factors happening here in this 2015 timeframe. One was the higher price of five-by-sixteen, which you're absolutely correct. And in 2015, you had that one-year short-term price spike in the MISO capacity market, which was the other driver behind that.
Okay. Then I'm going to go to the next, you know, little section, the 2016 to 2018. So then, we effectively were having the opportunity to buy energy from our, of the other member's cities, which was saving us a little bit, correct? And then that capacity then must have.
Yeah, what's happening here on the 20, well, 18, I think, when we did this, I think that what, what we're assuming for capacity cost for you guys in particular is it's an estimate, which we call a third of CONE. CONE is called the Cost of New Entrance. And in the MISO world, the way that works is that the CONE is the theoretical cap on your capacity prices. And the capacity market is going to be very, very, very volatile. It's going to be years and years, like we've seen the last few years, where the price is almost zero. Last year was almost literally zero. But there could be, all you have to do is get close to that generation load tipping point within a zone, and your prices are going to spike. So what we're assuming here is a third of CONE. Now, in the next couple of years, I don't really expect it to be that high, but just for planning purposes, Kyle's just using that as a number for the entire planning horizon. So that, that's why you see this jump up. It's, it's a more of a planning number driven by that. And we can probably revise this to reflect that in 18 and 19. But that's why you're seeing this jump up here. It's driven by that more than, than the energy side, which is what this is really meant to address.
Okay. Thank you.
So I'm sure I totally confused everybody on that one, though, but, but yeah, it's, it, they're excellent questions. And yeah, I don't, the whole capacity thing is completely separate. And the way MISO treats energy and capacity is, other than they both come from generators, that's about the extent of the way they're coupled. They, in terms of the market, they almost have literally nothing to do with each other. So.
So for us to make a decision, we're going to do, we're looking at something that's 10 to 15 years typically?
Yep.
Really hedging the price of natural gas?
Yep.
That's the bottom line.
That's the bottom line. And there, the other advantage of the, of the wind PPA versus the shaped product is term. The wind PPA is a 25-year deal. The shape is going to be a 10- or 15-year deal. And that's one of the other concerns is if you go back and look at, what, which one was it? If you go back and look at your.
Page four, I've got a question on that.
Page four, yes. If you look at page four, you're looking at the shaped product expiring in roughly the same timeframe as the rest of your power supply, right?
That's what I was going to ask you about, is how do we get beyond that?
That, that would be.
When do we start to be able to?
That would be one of the big advantages of the wind PPA is that, that goes beyond it. It goes 10 years beyond where these fall off on here on page four. So again, that's why there's, there's trade-offs, there's positives and negatives to all three of these options. And what it really comes down to is what is each member's risk appetite? And again, do-nothing is, is absolutely an option. We can always do that. We can always revisit this. We're constantly redoing studies. We're constantly evaluating. So that doesn't mean that if, you know, you or every single member decides, no, we're just going to put the brakes on this for a few years, that we won't revisit it, you know, next year, the year after. That's, that's what we're here for. Us, we do it for you guys, constantly study and evaluate.
What's the minimum amount to avoid a drop, a cliff like that to where all our energy just drops off in one year? If we can ladder that out, is there, you know, do you ever recommend that, where you don't do such big chunks of each one, unless you find a good deal on it?
Well, yeah, and that's.
And that's forecast.
And that's, that's part of what we're trying, that's, well, but there's two things. Yes, we're always trying to do that, right? But the flip side is that, and you just used the magic words there, if it's a good deal, you don't want to necessarily be planning on cliffs that are 20 years down the road and ignoring the fact that I've got a good deal at, you know, that, in the next 10 years, right? And that's, but again, that's part of that trade-off. The whole pro, the whole thing with planning, the whole problem with planning is as much of an art and as a science. I can always, you can always generate the least-cost plan, but most of the time, I would make the argument, the least-cost plan is not the best plan when you start factoring in risk and all, you know, timing and all those other factors. And some, you know, some cities are in different situations. Some cities want that price locked in so I know that my, my, my energy prices are going to be within this band for the next 10 years. Some are willing to take a little more volatility. That's a completely an individual decision.
Thank you. So if, I'm trying to get this somewhat in simplistic terms. So the, the wind, option two, which has the risk, versus option three, which has the premium.
Right.
Which would be roughly 69,000 annually.
Right.
To pay that premium.
Right.
We've got to figure out whether our risk would equal or exceed or be less than that 69,000.
That's, that's exactly right. Yep, that's exactly right. Yep. You got it.
That's a short term.
Shorter term.
Yeah. Is, is that, is that premium, or is that, you know, locking in that price, is that worth that $69,000? Now, the short answer is, if the market stays where it is today, you're overpaying. It's going to be that simple.
Yep.
Right? But none of us can guarantee what the market's going to be. If I knew what the market was going to be 10 years from now, I wouldn't be staying in front of you. I'd be trading from my own private island somewhere in the Caribbean, right? If you, if, if any of us had said 10 years from now that the long-term, or 10 years ago, I should say, that the long-term gas strip would be trading for $2.75, everybody would have thought you were insane, right? So, but that's why you're trying to, you're trying to factor in, you know, those risk components of part of that decision, right? And again, it's going to come down to each individual city, is the $69,000 worth it? That's exactly right.
I'm clear as your crystal ball.
Well, right. And again, that's why I'm saying we're, this is just the start of the process. We'll be back at least once unless you guys decide, yep, we know what we want to do. The, the whole point of this is to kind of come back as many times as we need to, to make everybody comfortable with whatever their decision is. So we'll be back. So we'll be back at least once, probably twice in reality, so.
Any other questions?
No. And I think we'll ask Chris back, and then I'm going to throw a couple monkey wrenches at him in the meantime.
Okay.
One is that we could be purchasing more territory. And two is, we should probably talk about generation.
Yes. Yes, and that's, that's, that's on our radar, and that is something that is, is, we're well aware of it. I, like I said, I'm not worried about it in the next couple of years.
Okay.
But I don't want you guys sitting essentially completely exposed to the market for the next 20 on that, because at some point, it will pop up. And when it pops up, it will have a big impact on, on you guys in particular, because you don't have any other generation like most of the rest of our members, so.
So on that, we're going to be buying more, possibly.
Right.
Is the high school already factored in that, that whole addition that just went?
Yes. So very shortly, we'll get MMUA involved in some conversations with XL Energy. So, yeah.
So that's all factored in here, too?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and, and we can, and, and, yeah, we'll, we'll make sure all that's factored in. Ultimately, you know, those type of things, we just, you know, yep, we're going to agree that this is, this is the assumption, because that's what it has to be, is from, from a long-term planning perspective. Once you have the assumption, we'll build, we'll build the portfolio around that.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay, down to new business. Do you have an agreement between the city and SNCAT?
So we have done this years in the past. This agreement does raise how much we're willing to pay to help low-income families with some of the energy-saving appliances or systems for their homes. And it also raises the, the total amount from the city for SNCAT to cover those kinds of things, to $15,000. The one thing that this contract does not say that SNCAT did ask, and I can make that change in wording if that's how the council wants to proceed, is that instead of sending us a group of receipts and then get reimbursed, SNCAT has asked, could we front that money? They'll then provide us with receipts for that chunk of money. We can either front it all upfront and have them send us receipts, or we could, for example, send them $5,000, we give back $5,000 in receipts. We send them another $5,000, we give back $5,000 in receipts, and then, you know, finish out the year and see how much they actually do spend.
How mu, how much is raising it, and where are we finding that in the budget?
Uh, that's our Conservation Improvement Program Fund. So those are already budgeted into our electric.
So $15,000 is already in there?
Yeah, yeah. That's our Conservation Improvement Program Funds, and we are using a portion of those for low-income programs.
Got it, so it's not increased by the bulk.
Right, and then SNCAT administers that for us.
Is that typical in other communities, that they get front of the money?
I think this is the first year that SNCAT is asking that. I, because the cost of everything has gone up and up and up, I think it's harder for them to spend the money upfront than wait until the end of the quarter and bill for the reimbursement. So I think it's just logistically what they have in the bank.
And what if they don't use it all?
Well, that's why it would be like five and five, and then let's finish out the year and see. But, but that's totally up to you. We can leave it the way that it's always been. They can.
The long of our staff effort, basically, is equal.
Equal, right.
How, how much have they done in the past, do you know?
Um, well, it goes up every year, and I'm sorry, but I do not have that answer for you.
Do we, do they use it all?
They come very, very close to using it all. And, and actually, that's kind of their job, to make sure that they're using it all. They had had an understanding in the past that we did one appliance per income-eligible home. And I said, well, that's not, that's not our requirement. Someone can come in for a dishwasher, somebody can come in for a refrigerator, somebody, you know, can replace their furnace, somebody can do air conditioning. So they've been able to expand their services to those residents of Cassin who can benefit from a low-income program. And I think we went from like, thinking it was $2,000 for an air conditioning unit, to thinking it was $3,000 for an air conditioning unit, now we're up to about $3,500 to get an air conditioning unit installed, a whole house air conditioning system installed.
Any questions or comments on that? Okay, we got the agreement before us.
Yep.
I guess my, my personal, just off, I'm, I'm a fan of fronting the money until they actually need it.
Okay.
So that's my opinion, if anybody else would like to discuss that.
I agree.
I agree. Although we're banking for a sale. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to accept the agreement between the city and SNCAT. Thanks, Tom.
Second.
I'll second it.
Stan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Agreement passed. Number two, resolution for premises permit for pull tabs at events from Hayfield Commercial Club.
Is this in addition to the?
Dodge County has the hockey association, I believe, left there.
They pulled it all in after the loss.
And Hayfield came in asking for this.
Just to know what they're asking for.
At least the risk.
Okay.
I'll move to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Tom. You enter for discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carries unanimously. Next is the Transportation Alliance Correspondents.
Which includes an ask for membership for members last year.
Correct. Where is the?
I think it's $315.
And that was in our?
Yeah. $315 for membership.
Anybody have any questions on that agreement? I'm going to recommend, I'll make a motion that we accept it. We've got some decent lackluster road improvement projects on our Trump Highway.
Yes.
We're getting value for the $315 represented by.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carries. Mayor's Report. First thing is. Council appointment. Is that, shall we do that beginning? What do you want for council appointment? They got boards and commissions and that stuff coming up, committees and that, they would say, what's the council appointment?
Um, which council members will serve on which?
Oh, okay, I had that one together.
I'm sorry.
Okay, gotcha, yeah. Okay, um, I haven't had a chance to talk to everybody now. So I'll make the rec, right, I guess, do you have to do this one at a time, or you just want them all?
You can do them all. If your, if your call, there's no motion.
Oh, there's no vote on the council?
No, you, you make the appointment.
I did a lot of asking. Okay, which is the way it should have been. Okay, Payne and Lonnie, planning a zoning, Mel for library board, myself and Dan, the EDA, and then Dan's going to take park board as well. So those are the council appointees, the four standing commissions.
Acting mayor approved.
Oh, yep, I'll give that. Acting mayor, I did reach out to Duane, since he's been mayor in the past, and asked him if he would do that if I'm away. He did accept that, so I appreciate that. I don't miss much, so probably going to be a very boring place on a piece of paper. And then, I guess I'll reappoint myself to the Finance Personnel Committee with negotiations this year, that'll be fun. And then on to Boards and Commissions. Is that what you want next, Hunter?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm going to recommend to the, do we do them all, or just by the commission, by the board?
Do it by the board.
Okay. So for Planning Commission, I want to recommend to the council that we reappoint Tom Ferris, Colin Tinsley, and then appoint Aaron Thompson to the Planning Consulting Committee for a three-year term each. So I'll make that recommendation.
Do you want to take a motion? Do you want separate for each one?
Oh, no, no, you.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Okay, then for Library Board, I want to recommend that we reappoint Lisa Carlson and Tara Camel to three-year terms. EDA, recommend Janice Borkson-Verst for a six-year term. Park Board, recommend to reappoint Greg Kubal and Roger Frankie for three-year terms. And I would entertain a motion to approve the appointments and reappointments.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan, do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Thank you. Those that attend this night, thanks for your service on the different commissions and that, so appreciate your redoing that. Okay, then possible committees and appointments. There are some other committees that have been active in the past. And I think maybe a better time to discuss that would be at our planning session, as maybe I can put something together on the different committees that have been around in the past. There are a lot of these committees, and some committees and different things there. I guess I would like to see that if we're going to have the committee, it be, you know, what's it for? What's the purpose? What are we trying to do with it? I don't want to, let's just go back to all these committees we had in 2004 or '05 where it was, okay, we have a committee. What, what do you do? What, what outcome are we looking for, like, what work are we looking to do? So then, maybe we can kick that around the table at the planning session. Oh, I have to. Excuse me.
Those are the fun.
I have to appoint a weed inspector and actually, and feed inspector, and actually submit it to the state. And I want to appoint Charlie Bradford as the official weed inspector, because I'm not too bad for that. So, and then arena committee, we did have a standing arena committee, and that has had some work with ice conditions, refrigerations, and that type of stuff. So I did not have that on my stuff until it was pointed out to me this afternoon, like at 4:45.
I'm sorry.
So is there somebody who's passionate about the ice arena that would like to be on the arena committee? Okay. I will do the arena committee.
Okay.
So I will, I will try that.
Okay.
See what that's like.
Very hot.
It's cold.
You'll get it to her.
Yeah, I've. It's the cold place. That's all I need, and we don't need, I took chicken inspector off the list this year. It turned out we really didn't have to have a chicken inspector.
Right.
Our animal control.
Do you have the health director anymore?
Not required.
Not anymore?
So I'll get a list of the old committees that we used to have, out to everybody. And then, if you have ideas, we can take it around at the work session in March when we get together. And the schedule of the March planning session. So typically, we do that on a Saturday in March, from eight to noon, at the Public Works Building. And we have different departments come in, we have some of our planning consultants come in, give us a capital update and some other things, a budget, maybe some electricity, and get more in detail on some of that, too. So is there a Saturday morning in March that does not work for anybody? Probably prefer to look at the first or second Saturday in March.
So that'd be the second of the ninth.
Yeah, the second of the ninth. I know I'm open on bulls, and anybody here have kids in hockey or basketball that might be a tournament?
I'm going to be on the beach in the Dominican on the second. So that one's.
So we're going with you? We're not, we're not going there, we're not going to go there.
Also.
Sorry, so the second?
The second I'll be away.
Yeah. Sorry, Duane can't go. Uh, how about the ninth?
I have nothing right now.
Ninth? You'll be back in time.
I'll be back on the ninth.
Okay. So can we tentatively schedule that for the ninth, then? And then you want to line up the folks, Teresa? It's noon on March night?
Yep.
At Public Works. And then just a couple of other things, just like to recognize, it's today's National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, so just shout out to the law enforcement folks here in town, the job they do. Tomorrow morning, the EDA is going to host their first Cassin Connection, Connections. It's going to be at Daniel's at 7:30 in the morning, half hour, 45 minutes, some coffee. EDA is just going to give a little update on EDA events. We're hoping over time to get this to have developers, contractors, people come in to talk about economic development opportunities in the city, and have a little more in-depth conversation with the EDA staff. Cassin Fire Department's having a pancake breakfast on Saturday, January 26, from 8 to 10 at Prairie Meadows. And the Festival of Biscuits Greater Breakfast is a Saturday at Legion from 7 to 11. Just want to point that out there, buddy. And we'll go to the Administrator's Report.
All right, just a couple of things. We have council members who are back and council members who are new, to take a look at, so salaries for the mayor and council members, and then also the compensation rate for meetings outside of your council meeting. That's up to 36 meetings, January through June, and 36 meetings, July through December, when acting at any meeting as the official does to me as the Cassin City Council. So Linda will be asking you, or your list of meetings. So this is like the time to start keeping track between now and the end of June of the meetings that you attend. So if you're on park board, library board, the, the council work session, those are the kinds of things that you will keep track of. The newly-elected and experienced officers training, so there's several things to just try to keep track of and be prepared when Linda calls and says, I need your meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah, we did have information in there, too, about the technology stipend, and we will be getting those back.
It'll be in your account on Friday.
Oh, okay.
Done.
Done.
Just so you know.
Does the Dodge County Conference of Planers?
Yes, so Dodge County's been working on their comprehensive plan for maybe a year and a half for quite some time. You'll see that one caveat that they do have in their housing section is that they are also working, Dodge County's also working on a housing study, which we participated in financially in order to kind of get that off the ground and get that in the works. But this is to let you know that they're having a public information meeting Wednesday, January 30th at 7:00 PM in their commissioner's room to take comments. I only gave you the executive summary in this packet, the full plan is on the council website.
Have we had representation at any of their development meetings?
We were invited to a public meeting. I did attend that public meeting at the forum room at the high school. That's why I'm thinking it's been like a year and a half ago. Yeah, there were also members of Canis Field Township at that meeting. So, so they did hold a series of meetings around the county, it's just that that was quite some time ago. The organization doing the plan had some staffing changes, which I think stretched this out a little longer than the county had planned.
Thank you. Nothing, Brandon?
All right.
We are going to close the meeting at this time for a closed session for an update from our attorney on ongoing litigations. And when the closed session is over, we will, we will turn it up and invite you back in.
All right.
Thank you.
And Linda's going to touch our students?
Yeah, if you guys want to get signed, we're talking about. Thanks for coming. Yeah, some really fun stuff, why?